Okay, we call the meeting to order. Clerk Rees-Me, would you please grace gracefully call the roll?
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
Clerk Rees-Me, here. Trustee Vance.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Dilly.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, Dilly, I'm sorry.
But you're still a trustee, too.
Trusted treasurer.
Okay, I'll take that. Here.
All present.
Okay, we're gonna have a budget and a policy workshop. We relaxed the rules, so I want to make it clear that the deputy supervisor and our two staff members are here, Karen Decker and Chris Green. You can speak up at any time. So before we get started on the budget workshop, I do want to make some comments so we have a common understanding before we get into these things. And then I would like to give the opportunity for each board member to make any comments or to say what they would like to achieve in this budget workshop. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. The first thing I want to do is I want to toot this board's horn. I want to thank especially Clerk Rees-Me and Jan, our treasurer, and our deputy clerk, and our two staff members. I've done some initial analysis on where we are, six and a half months in. And you may recall that we did the first balanced budget in a couple of decades, and we really went zero-based budgeting, based only on requirements. My analysis with what we are gonna go over today in the general fund, I'm just talking about the general fund. If we back out the capital expenditures that we did, we are only at 41% execution. So all these stingy people sitting at this table have really done a great job. I mean Karen will tell you, she drives me nuts sometimes coming in here with these bills. Ah, you can't do that, you can't do this. And Jay, too. And I'll tell you, it's paying off. It's painful, but it's paying off. Another thing that I wanted to read to you, this goes all the way back to either 2011 or 2013, when a previous board enacted a policy which we included in our new policy, Chapter 4, Paragraph 11. I just want to read it to you. "If the unassigned general fund balance approaches a level that greatly exceeds 50% of expenditures, the township board will consider unassigned fund balances for the following purposes: Pay down future debt; transfer funds to capital projects for future capital improvements." And that's what we've been doing, okay? And we'll see on page seven those capital expenditures for the cemetery, the airport, buildings and grounds, parks, front neck. And even though we've spent $105,000 to date, we recovered a lot of that money through grants, and I wanted to go through that with you. I'm going, as Chief Budget Officer for the township, I'm going to have to make substantial changes to our budget on the revenue side because by my calculations, we are going to receive five, almost $600,000 more revenue than we projected. Now, $120,000 of that is the sewer fund, Fund 590, I believe it is. Is it 590?
Enterprise one?
Yeah.
258.
Okay. It's what?
Which one?
For the sewer.
So 590 is the sewer.
It is sewer.
590 is the one.
But if you take the $100,000 county grant, $100,000, state land bank, almost $50,000, cemetery sales, $20,000, land sales, $275,000, timber sales, $30,000. I believe that if we continue our due diligence, this is just me, my thoughts, and if we continue to watch every penny like we've been doing, we're gonna be anywhere between 35% and 40% surplus this year in the general fund alone. And I'm very excited that we had the forethought, because we had an $800 and some thousand-dollar fund balance at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we said, look, under this policy 4-11, we need to give that money back to the people and get down to that $400,000 or $425,000 or whatever that magic number is. And the best way to give the people their money back, in my opinion, just my opinion, is infrastructure.
Exactly.
Fix the parks, fix the gravel, fix the roads. So fix the heating here.
Fix the building.
Yeah, fix the building. We got a big problem with the building that we've talked about before. So I'm very excited just going through this, you know, initial blush, and I'm really excited to hear some of the things that we gotta change. Now, one thing that every government does, and I've always been involved in it, and companies do this, I think your company does it. We have annual budgets, but we also have, most governments have quarterly budget reviews. The county has quarterly budget reviews. I don't think we're big enough to do that, so in previous meetings, we agreed, I believe, that we were gonna start with just semi-annual. So that's what we're here for, to see where we have underspent money that may be able to be moved to places that need the funding for various reasons. And that's the purpose of, in my view, that's the purpose today, plus to find any other mistakes, corrections, or holes. Now, it's, I don't believe that we should be making budget adjustments or budget additions or anything like that today. We should do that at the February meeting. But what I'm gonna do now is I'm pretty much gonna just shut up and start taking notes with my red pen. So when we come to the February meeting, I'll have a list of budget adjustments and budget additions that I believe that we should address. So I want to turn it over to other board members. Let's start with Jan.
Oh.
Anything you'd care to add or anything?
No pressure, bud.
You'd like to look at or stuff that we don't know about?
I would, I would just like to take a minute and say that it's been a lot. I don't think that we could've gotten through the audit without Chris's help. Chris and I are continuing to find things that need to be cleaned up, and we're cleaning them up. The auditors were not as helpful as I had hoped, and they are definitely looking at a much higher level of reporting than the detail that we're looking at on a day-to-day basis, but we're making progress. And I think some of the things that we're doing here are gonna impact that in a positive way.
Jay, comments?
Well, I just want to make sure we have all the admin and office assistant budgets covered.
Okay.
I haven't really done the final analysis here, but I know that we're running, we're getting close. So if there's any way to make sure we move the money, make sure those are covered, and with, and for the deputy clerk, too.
In fact, when you discuss that in your packet, folks, on page two, I just took some cut and paste from the Uniform Budget Manual, and it says, "The legislative body must amend the budget as soon as a deviation is apparent." And that includes the General Appropriations Act. So that just backs up what you just said. I just wanted to point that out.
We're sure on funds with the deputy clerk, and the deputy clerk has helped me with elections, so if we need to, we can move money from elections to deputy clerk. That's primarily how Penny's been assisting with all the work that's gotta go on here now in preparation for this election with the other three potentials, or two to three.
Elections coming up.
Yep, coming up. Then there's, like I said, the, I think we're okay with the admin, with the office assistant. I'd like to make sure we have the ability to cover full-time employment.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that, and we'll get to that. Anything else, Jay?
Not at this time. I think on elections, we're okay going, obviously through this first election, possibly even through May, depending on what happens, but then the next budget year, we can obviously find, we'll know a lot more about what's causing us to do this.
Okay, sir. Trustee Pearson.
I just want to make sure that we are stable in moving money to the right spots.
And that's the purpose of this evening's discussion. Anything else?
Not really.
Trustee Vance.
Okay. The only thing, there's some issues about what's already been talked about, and then I see that the cemetery is like pretty high on, and we've got some more improvements to do there, so I think we need to move some money into that cost center. But I think we're doing pretty good. I mean, I looked at the airport. The airport is doing exceptional, and with the timber sales that we're getting, that's about $30,000, and that goes right back into the airport CIPs. And the fact that...
Can I say something about that?
Yes.
We need to figure a way to get that into a assigned or committed within the general fund, because it's gonna be in the general fund.
Right.
It doesn't need to go back into the airport. I mean, it could be assigned to the airport, but that's the way you would do it.
Okay.
So we need to talk about, or we need to figure out...
Like a dedicated fund type of thing?
It's, it's within our policy. It's, we have restricted funds, we're a third party is...
Yeah, Chapter 4, Dot 12.
Yeah, 4.11 or 12.12. Restricted is like the vote, vote.
Vote.
Because a third party that says, we don't want you spending this money or any of this money without our approval.
Right.
So it's restricted. Committed is the board can commit funds. So we all vote unanimously to commit, set aside funds of the general fund to be used by a certain...
Cost center.
Cost center thing.
Yeah.
And then there's assigned, the clerk will assign to a cost center, and it's obviously a lot more, I'll say, flexible.
Okay. So I think we need to do something with that.
So if we want to talk about airport and setting aside funds, we need a policy, well, we have the policy, we just need to proceed here.
Procedure.
What we're gonna do.
Yep, and the fact, and the airport's doing really well, even though we put some money into that because of all the volunteers getting out there, I mean, we got a committee together, and they did the striping, which saved a lot of money, and they did it themselves, just bought the equipment, did it themselves, and a lot of, you know, we've done a lot for the hands-on. I don't wanna, myself, I don't want to touch anything on parks. That's my opinion. I think their expenses are higher in the spring than any other time, because they're getting everything ready for the summer. Thank you. The summer, and I kinda want to leave that alone, but these are just my overall thoughts before we get started of where I'm at, so.
Okay. So if we could proceed, and you can all jump, oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Supervisor Odenwald.
The only thing I have to add is I think we all need to be thinking about a Plan B in case the building grant that we're all so hopeful for does not materialize. I'm still optimistic that it will. I think we fit the criteria, especially because they were looking for projects that benefit more than one agency or more than one department within the same physical building, and we're perfectly, you know, perfect fit for that between the police and the library, the fact that it's an election precinct, plus all the community use of law drives and the other things that happen here in this room. So I am still optimistic about that, but, you know, hope is not a strategy.
How much was that request? Almost a quarter million?
I thought it was like $260,000. So it's enough to cover the structural issues, the...
In the basement you're talking about?
Yeah, the cracked foundation.
Foundation.
Gutters, ice abatements, the grain tiles, plus the security cameras, plus some computer, and I don't know if we included computer upgrades, the computer security upgrades. I know that's a CIP item, but I don't know if any of that was involved in the grant.
Streetlights, parking lot lights.
Yeah, parking lot lights that are gonna fall over from the rest.
So the camera issue, beyond just being general security...
Oh, and fire.
Is an election mandate, yes, and the fire system, which is, you know, even the situation that we're in now with the cold temperature, the charged wet sprinkler system is not monitored other than an alarm bell on the back of the building.
Well, for the board members who are not aware, wasn't for Doug, we might've had a serious fire in this building the other day, a couple weeks ago.
With the exit sign.
Because of the exit sign. We had no fire alarms, no fire suppression, nothing, so.
And the only other comment I would make, we are generating significant revenue from the sales at the Commerce Park. You know, Commerce Park is becoming more of an issue because of activity there, upcoming builds there. I think it is wise for us to take some of that sale revenue and put it in attorney counsel fees because we're gonna spend it.
That's a good point.
Ms. Green, comments? Ms. Decker? Okay. All right, so if it's acceptable to everybody, we just go, start going line by line with revenue, and what you can see is that if you go down to land sales at 101, 643, you know, I will be taking, in February, I will submit a budget adjustment to increase that $35,000 budget to be more in line with, you know, what our, what our true revenue is. So we have to do it on both sides of the ball, both revenue and expenditures. But we start with property tax. We haven't, that just hasn't been booked yet, right? The very first line, right here.
Well, I'm looking at a number of things here that are kind of puzzling to me, so...
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so property taxes, current property taxes, the delinquent personal property taxes, that looks right. I haven't received any payments from people who are delinquent. Penalties, I'm not sure why that's zero at this point. I'm gonna have to look at the mapping. One of the things I have noticed is that some of the tax receipts are not mapped correctly. We had special assessment for sewer being mapped to cash over and under, but that's been fixed, but I can see there's other stuff here that I need to look at. The tax admin fee, that looks appropriate.
Okay.
Special assessments, that doesn't seem right to me. And the boat launch fees, that is a real puzzle. I have no idea why the boat launch fee is showing up as zero.
That's because it was moved to its own cost center, its own funding line, eight, eight something, way back in the back there.
But that's...
That was done by a previous board.
Wait a second.
It is...
Am I just too tired to...
Yeah, I know. Here you go, it's 502. That was all moved to 502.
So we just need to get that out of the way?
Yes, yes.
No, that's just, but those are, that's not right gone.
Okay.
So those are expenses.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're saying all the revenues are in 502, 653.
Yes.
So we need to get rid of that boat launch, 646 account.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. You don't have to amend them.
And then the other thing I wanted to ask you is, you can see like it says federal revenue, state grant ARPA, state rec grant. So how would we book the county reimbursement?
The county grant reimbursement?
Right, and the state land bank reimbursement, because I don't see any, like, would it just go under 676 reimbursements?
Well, so you have the state reimbursement for summer taxes.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, no. What I'm talking about is we got reimbursed by the state land bank, and we haven't booked it yet. You know, we got like almost $50,000, and that...
Yep.
Hadn't been booked yet, but where would we put that? Because I don't think, would we have to create a new number?
Would that go on 676 as reimbursement?
I don't have enough information about what that money is to answer your question, sorry.
Yeah, so basically, we got, what, $48,000 or $49,000 grant reimbursement?
Oh, so...
From the state land bank, but you would think that it would go under state grants, but it says state grants ARPA, so it can't go there.
Right, because that ARPA account should also be closed out in the next phase.
Right, and then state rec grant stays open because we may get another one, but I don't know where to put like the county reimbursement grant, the grant reimbursement, or where we would put the state land bank, unless you would put, just put it under 676.
Well, and I'm not a fan of setting up a GL code every time we have a new grant. That's, that gets real messy.
So could we just put it under 676 reimbursements?
We need to have a trial balance run to decide, because not all the accounts are here.
Okay.
These are all the revenue, for the budget, budget revenue and budget expenses. And some of that information possibly could go into one of the accounts that would show up in the trial balance.
I don't, I don't see a grant reimbursement as anything other than a revenue cash-in or, it's not an asset or a liability.
Yeah, so wouldn't it just, to make it easy, go under 676 reimbursement?
I don't know about, I have to, I have to look at the grant.
Well, when we do it, I just have to do, you know, a simple amendment for board approval at one of the meetings.
Well, it's money coming in, so it doesn't, it doesn't have an impact on the general appropriations.
But it wasn't on the original budget, so I'm not sure how you...
So to give you an example, there's $231,000, right, for land sales?
Land sales.
Yeah, we gotta do a budget adjustment to change it from $35,000 to what we actually got.
No, I don't, I don't think that's true at all.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Andrew said we should do, but...
On the expense side, I agree. So the principle is, if you don't have money in the budget, you can't spend it. This is money coming in. So the, I am not aware of the general appropriations telling us that we have to make budget adjustments for revenue. I could be wrong.
I'll ask him again.
Can we set up a capital budget? Because all the, all the things you're talking about, grants, general funds, are capital-related projects.
And that was my understanding when I talked to Neil, that we could move capital improvements, the money coming in for capital improvements and the money being expended from capital improvements did not impact the general appropriations and the budget that the board established under a general appropriation, so I'm...
Gotta do a little more research, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Love to talk to Neil again.
Yep.
Clarify what I asked him before.
Sure.
Make sure I understood what he said.
Okay, we'll let you do that.
When was the last time that you talked to him, or what?
It's been several months, because I thought I was pretty, I thought I had a pretty clear understanding, but it appears that I might be money.
Well, government accounting is different than business.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can move on to Township Board 101, and Jay, you had some concerns.
Wait a second.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Before I move on to that, what other things in here do you think need to be removed?
Well, she said boat launch fees.
Yeah.
I'll mark them.
This is just, this isn't, this doesn't have anything to do with the budget. This is just cleaning up the trial balance.
Right, that's what I mean, so we don't have to...
From the accounting perspective, so that people don't inadvertently use accounts that should really not be active anymore.
Mm-hmm.
But you have the wherewithal and the authority and the access to take those out, right?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll let Jan handle that, that's her expertise, her and Jay. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Boat launch and ARPA.
ARPA, was the two that were identified.
Yeah, boat launch and ARPA.
Were the two that were identified.
I will say, but we don't have to address it now, but if we're successful with the fireworks, we will be getting more contributions from private sources. Okay, so Township Board, that's where we do need some more funding.
We need more for the administrative assistant. We voted on us giving her a raise that kicks in here, so we do, obviously, it's close right now, I haven't done the, but I can't tell you how much, but that's gonna need some assistance. And there's the office assistant, where we want to work full-time and...
Or full-time equivalent.
Or full-time equivalent, yep. So we need to, we're gonna need to bump that.
You want me to work on that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll work on that, and I'll have a recommended solution at the February meeting. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, because I would also like to just bump up the community fireworks promotion based on, even though we've already got $25,000.
Wow.
That, we spent that, that, part of that's from last year.
Was it $15,000 from last year?
Yeah.
I have a question before you move on.
Yeah.
So 101, 850.
850, yes, sir.
Typically, what was that? Was that the cable bill, the phone bill? Should we be coding the new uptime VoIP system monthly fee to that category?
We oughta look into, we oughta look into that.
Historically, I don't know what that category was used for, and then I also have questions about 852, 948, and 980, because they all seem very similar and kind of symbiotic, and I'm just looking for some clarity as to what goes where.
So I'll tell you what, in the next, in the next few days, why don't you and I get with Chris and we'll pull all that and clarify it. Should be difficult, right? Okay.
Thank you.
You want to take...
Which ones were those again?
All the computer and communications related, so...
Internet website.
101, 850, 852, 948, and 980.
Now, do you, Jay, or anyone on the board, in this 101 Township Board, do you see anything else that may need to be beefed up or reduced? I can see, for example, we...
Either, I just want to go back to the communications. If we need all four of those, we oughta change the labels on those to be more...
Correct.
Specific for what, like budgeted or expensive.
I agree. If it's VoIP phone, say VoIP phone, if it's, because, you know, if any of it is the breakout for merit that we're reimbursing a lot, you know... If it's, because, you know, if, if any of it is the breakout for merit that we're reimbursing a lot, you know, just tie in. Some clarification, some detail, if you will.
So having spoken with the auditors, I would say that the fireworks budget for this year, I see it in a bit different light. Because we're not going to spend that money in this fiscal year. It's, it's, whatever we were going to spend for fireworks, we've already spent.
Okay, you're right, good point. Yeah, because the fireworks pop off on the fifth, right?
Right, and, and I was, I was under the impression that, that the auditors were not looking at, at us to do the modifications to get us from cash to modify to accrual. And now I understand that they were asking us to do that. And because of that, this, if we had actually spent any money on fireworks, let's say they wanted a deposit.
They got that already, though.
Yeah, ten grand.
So that's not an expense, it's a, it's not an expense against this budget, it's a prepaid for next year's budget.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, and, and just.
Is that right?
We need to obviously set it up that way.
Just to make sure everybody understands, fifteen thousand is the minimal amount of the smallest fireworks program they'll give us, is fifteen thousand. We bumped it up to twenty-five because we agreed that the township would pay the initial base price of fifteen. And the donations would cover everything over that, which we received a lot of donations on Friday. I'm not sure how much, but anyway, we've received them. And so, just, just let everybody know, that's why it shows in the budget. Because we're including projected donations. And they will adjust our show accordingly on how much money we end up with and what our expenses are going to be. So just letting everybody know, we're, the township itself is paying for the base. And then donations cover the rest. But we had to give estimated donations according to past practices and stuff. And so that's what we did, and that's what's showing up in the budget. That's not, this twenty-five is not coming out of the township budget. But we have to actually put the donations into revenue before we can take them out. And that's why it looks the way it does. I just wanted to clarify that, hope that helps.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take care of that by the February meeting and have a proposal. But it looks like I've got to find approximately twenty thousand dollars to put in Department 101. And I'll work on that. In the supervisor thing, I have scheduled, which is not reflected here, eight hundred dollars worth of training that I'll share with the deputy and Chris, but we'll just take it out of my cost center. Contingencies, I thought we only had, we agreed on forty, but I think we increased that to fifty-one oh four seven, so we have some, some legroom there. Jay, you're dead on, do you need any adjustments in two fifteen? You talked about the deputy?
Yeah, the deputy for sure, yeah, that's. I'll come back with a number if you need.
Does that need to be, because of the election, does that need to be doubled?
I don't know if it needs to be doubled, but I know that we need more in there, primarily because of the election. It's possible we could take away what's in the elections and move some money from there.
Okay, so I'll, I'll work with you on that before the next meeting then, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can move some money from the election inspectors.
Okay, so that would be a budget adjustment, no?
I mean, I think, my gross estimate, I recall, was three to five thousand for election inspectors for this, this election. And if we have one in May, it'll be another three to five thousand.
Any, any board member have any comments on what he suggested? Okay, accounting fees, are we good? That's awful low. Internal audit?
I'll know better after I work with you tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, this is an ongoing process, we can make budget adjustments every month if we have to, right? We've been done that way in the past.
No, we don't need to. We could.
Board of review? I'll talk to Doug about that because I'm not quite sure why we haven't spent that money. Do we pay them?
Yeah, it's what, December?
Yeah, the last checks I remember writing were, or signed were in June, May or June.
Okay, so, so we'll want to leave that alone?
I don't know if it was, you know, if they wait and do it once, once a year, or if there's.
I would, I would hate to make people wait that served on the December Board of Review.
Yeah, we need to pay them.
I don't think, I don't think we should make them wait, I'm just.
No, I know, I.
If we need to pay them, that's, we've got to come forward with a check request.
Yeah, we might need to remind Doug that they need to get paid.
Can you do that for us, Chris? Thank you. Jan, you need some help?
I'm only over on things that I expected that would, that would be over. Except for maybe the computer services, the software. We, I know we didn't budget that, but it was necessary.
Sure.
And I'm over on postage because we're mailing people receipts that have never gotten receipts in the past.
Okay.
Which software was that, Jan? Is it the miscellaneous receivable?
I think so.
Okay, so you want me to take care of that in the plan then?
Yeah.
To get you to fifty percent?
Yeah, because I'm going to, I'm going to be pretty much done with spending money on postage in the next forty-five days.
We need the miscellaneous receivables, which we now have, it's operating, Jan's using it, Chris.
Okay.
And if we're going to pull in money from the parks or from any place where there's air, any place outside, you need to be able to build them and then obviously receive that money and then come forth promptly.
Okay.
I think, and I think the biggest part of that isn't so much that we can send them a bill because you can dummy up a bill anywhere. It's having the systems that say, we billed you on this date and it's thirty days, sixty days, ninety days later and you still haven't paid. And, and be able to communicate that in a, in a way that's professional.
Just like with our trailer park.
Yeah.
We're twenty-five years without being built, so.
Now.
Maybe they built it, they just didn't collect it.
So we won't need mail and postage after a month or two?
Well, the, so the, the vast majority of the tax bills are going to be paid by the, by the middle of February.
Okay.
It'll trickle off and be done by the end of February.
Okay.
There'll still be some postage, but I, you know, the, the heavy use of postage is really in sending people receipts for their tax payments. I'm, I'm hoping we can encourage people to give us email addresses and provide other ways of not just getting them the bill, but getting them a receipt for their payment that doesn't, isn't quite so heavy on the expenses.
Okay.
We made some improvements there. I was using the treasure envelopes to send receipts out that cost almost forty cents a piece. We're using a dual-window envelope that works with the new receipt format. So that saves twenty-five cents a mailing. But the, the post office would still like to get paid, ironically.
Especially postage is going up.
Yep, yep.
Is there a way to separate what's being done for the treasurer with tax bills versus elections? Where we're, we're creating a lot of mail there too. Do you know, you know, with the machines, are we capable of differentiating?
How much goes through the Pitney Bowes machine?
Yeah.
I don't know if that postage meter will do that, it probably will.
Well, either way, we can estimate it if it won't, but I.
Well, you can apportion stuff.
If we're able to differentiate it?
I don't know about that one, I know the bigger ones you can.
Yeah, but we don't have the bigger ones.
But could you manually do a split in BSNA?
Well, it's, it's not bad, it's knowing how much to split it.
Oh, okay.
So, so I walk up to the postage meter with a hundred envelopes.
Yes, ma'am.
Who are they for?
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to be.
That's what we're talking, all we're trying, just to be clear, all we're trying to do is make sure we have multiple postage accounts. And so we need to understand how to estimate or how to divide up the money that comes off that machine for the, for the different accounts. Or we need to have one account, one of the two.
Okay, going over to the assessor, I will talk to, if you could look on page four. Professional tax preparation, mail, postage, mileage, reimburse, you know, some of these things that he hasn't spent a dime on. What's with the software maintenance agreement?
He knows BSNA software.
Oh, okay, we didn't get a bill or something?
They only come once a year.
Okay.
We have to apportion it.
So I'm going to talk to him about eight oh one, eight oh four, and eight fifty-one. Because if he's not going to use it, Jan can use it. Jay, you want to talk about the next one, elections?
So, 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 so just, so you know, those are for personal property tax returns.
Okay.
So the county, so he does the assessment.
Okay.
The, the business owner fills out the form in, hopefully in February.
Okay.
Turns it in, it comes here, Doug processes it.
Okay.
But those forms get sent out, not by Doug, but by the county. And they would have just gone out in the last few weeks. Because we're getting them back for people who have bad addresses. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't close those out yet.
Oh, I won't.
Because I don't know, I don't know what that bill from the county looks like.
Oh, they, they send us a bill?
I, I would expect them to send us a bill, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll talk to Doug about, well, I was going to talk to him anyway, so.
So that was eight oh one, eight oh four, what was the other one?
I'm going to talk to Doug about eight oh one, eight oh four, and eight fifty-one.
Okay, and, and then, you know, then he has his annual assessment notice that he sends out. I'm not sure how he gets that accomplished either.
Okay.
I, I know when we send the bills through KCI. I don't know how we found KCI, I don't know who found KCI. I don't know how they do what they do for what we pay for that, I really don't.
I know, that's pretty interesting.
It's, it's, I, I don't know how they make money. We can't send them out for.
I talked, I talked to them today on another matter and postage goes up Sunday. On their, on their bulk. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him. He just wasn't able to be here tonight, that's all. Jay, elections?
Right now, like I said, we may be able to use part of the twelve thousand that would admins and deputy clerks.
Jay, I can't hear you very well, I'm sorry.
Have to speak right into it, there you go.
Yeah, thanks.
The twelve thousand five hundred, like I said, three to five thousand of that's going to be for each election for election inspectors.
Okay.
So either for February, possibly May. Elections coordinator, we're fifty percent through. We may be okay, I'm not ready to, you know, say we're not at this point.
I think we need to keep that there.
Well, yeah, we need to keep it there for sure.
Might need more.
You might need more.
Yes.
But, but remember, we're not on a line item, we're on a. You know, we're on a cost center basis, so if you're a little over on one and under another, you're golden.
Yeah, the machine setup, we have cross cutting in on the tabulators, nine hundred dollars for that. The yellow postage, here's another, the twenty-four hundred. I know we've spent at least a thousand dollars, or at least, we put out, we sent out board registration cards to all the, all the voters, we've sent out ballot applications to a thousand voters, roughly. So I know that we should be up in the neighborhood of almost two thousand dollars. Fifteen hundred to two thousand. And we've got more, obviously, coming. Especially, and I can't, I don't want to lose money until I find out if there's another election coming or not.
Okay.
And if there is, then the school would be painful, yet most likely, I just don't know yet.
Yeah, what's, what, isn't there a deadline?
Yeah, it's coming up, it's not till, I think, the end of February.
I thought it was the twenty-second.
Middle of February, sometime.
January or February?
February.
February.
Okay.
So, but again, printing, publishing, I just don't know.
Okay.
We may need to actually print some cards and get information out to voters here in the future, so.
Understood.
We don't have a paper, we don't have really a way to communicate with them.
Okay.
Just that same topic, there's a lot of discussion on the MTA website about the legalities of the county sending that card to households.
Rather than individual.
Rather than individual registered voters. And if any of these election integrity groups get a hold of that and turn it into a lawsuit, they're going to win. So, again, I know that they're handling the early voting, so, you know, Karen took it upon, took, took over the responsibility to do the notification. I just don't know if it's going to hold up to scrutiny and if that could fall back on us, so. I think there's a better than even chance that somewhere between now and the end of this election cycle, you're going to have to locally be mailing notification cards for future elections to individual voters to advise them on early voting.
A lot of townships have already started to do that.
Yep, yep. Again, one of those things that, you know, done with the best of intentions, looking at cost savings and efficiency, and it just doesn't align with the language.
Okay, thanks.
I, I know, I'm always.
No, if I should.
Good to know.
Okay, attorney counsel fees, we're at, we have five thousand remaining, I don't see an issue at this moment.
No, but that goes back to my earlier comment.
Right.
You know, Commerce Park stuff, other, other revenue questions.
Yeah, in confection with the land sales.
Right, right. And you, you know, you kind of, did you jump over buildings and grounds?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, on purpose, because we, we don't know what we don't know until we hear back from the grant.
Well, correct, but again, nine thirty and nine seventy-five, if you have the potential to take some of that land sale money and, and squirrel it away in there as, as the plan B.
Yep.
And, and I would like to see that figure be somewhere in the neighborhood of forty because that would cover that foundation repair if we had to do it on our own. Now, it is obviously a split cost, so that would be going to the library and to the PD as well, but.
So, so nine thirty is repairs and maintenance?
Yeah, and again, questions on what, what does that really mean?
What you're, if you're talking about spending forty on a, on a structural improvement to the building.
Sounds like a repair to me.
It's not, it's, it's a capital improvement. It lengthens the life of the asset.
Oh, okay, but again, accounts, so.
I know, we're a pain, aren't we?
I have a question.
Is that nine seventy-five then, right?
Well, I would say it doesn't belong in here at all, it belongs in the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
That, that's just me.
I have a question on nine seven five.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is there a penny in that?
To make you ask questions? To make you ask questions?
I guess, to make sure we're paying attention, I don't know.
Is that what auditors call immaterial?
Definitely.
It just struck me as strange.
All right, any, anything else on two sixty-five? What about two sixty-six, you want to leave it for now and address it as it comes up?
As the, as, how about as the revenue comes in?
Okay. Understood, okay. Roads, streets, and bridges? I, I gotta tip my hat to Jay, he saved us a lot of money on brining.
Doug too, so.
And, and the way it was done, but we're going to address this later on. But just to bring everybody up to date, we had a big meeting, Jan, you, Jan, you want to talk about that?
Part of the road, the road brining went into two different budget years too, so just.
Right.
Keep that in mind, I mean.
Right.
Right, we're, we're, we're talking with the county to put substantial amount of gravel on some of these roads that have been neglected for decades. Some of these roads cannot be paved, or they're just unaffordable to pave. So it's up to us if we want to improve them. Well, when they're washing out, we're going to have to do something. So we talked to county about that extensively, we're going to put in a good amount of money towards gravel in this fiscal year and next fiscal year. But the thing of it is too, with the brining, because we're going to put so much gravel in, we won't need as much brining because there's not going to be as much dust once we put this gravel on some of these roads. So right now, we're considering only putting brining on the roads that we cannot fix with, with the kind of budget we have to put into gravel. Like Wobbin Road, there's no way we could put enough gravel in that road to make a difference. So brining will be very important on a road like that. And right now, that's the only one that comes to mind, I'm sure there's a couple others.
Fisher Woods.
Yep.
Yeah, Fisher Woods would be important. Things like that, that's just, we can't fix it with the budget that we have, but we can put a Band-Aid on it, okay? And so, and pretty soon, and we were told by the county too, more than likely, in the next few years, brining's going to become illegal because of restrictions, environmental restrictions. So we're going to have to figure some of this out anyway. So we're going to try and get a jump on that with putting gravel on some of these roads that are failing and trying to save them and stuff, because we just can't pave everything. We just don't have that kind of money to, to put towards that kind. But we do have some money we can throw into gravel, and gravel will, they said you put a three-inch base of gravel on some of these bad spots, and they're going to look at the worst spots. they said you put a three-inch base of gravel on some of these bad spots, and they're going to look at the worst spots to put it in. It will help substantially save the road. So that's what, and we're kinda dependent on the road commission to tell us where and when they wanna do that, but they have a better idea of where the bad spots are. You necessarily don't have to do the whole road with gravel, sometimes you can just get by with, you know, a, a bad area, and that's good, you know, but that's what they wanna do.
Yeah.
Did I do that right?
Yeah, a- actually, they asked, they told us that, at a minimum, at a minimum, they need twenty-five thousand dollars for what they call spot gravel. So, you got like, that one end of McMichael that is literally washing out and there's no gravel at all.
Right.
They would just put spot gravel there, they're not doing the whole road. Uh, Macavista, it's got a water problem in one place.
King Road was another, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, right, so, you know, they're, they're not gonna take gravel and just do a whole road, they're just going in, I, I'd call it a patch.
Yep, yep, they're gonna find the worst spots, put the gravel in there to help save the road. And, and it'll last for two, three, four years, I mean, they said it, it'll last quite a while if you put a substantial amount in there, like a three, four inch base, so, um, and that's what we agreed to do, and that will fit into our budget.
Well, that's what we said we were gonna present at this meeting.
Yeah, but we agreed with them that that would be the most economical and most efficient way to move forward.
Just to give the board some background, Kohler alone is spending thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, on gravel. Uh, and they have some other ones. So they're recommending, uh, uh, twenty-five thousand, uh, this fiscal year and twenty-five thousand next. So, uh, later on, when we get to the bills, uh, we'll talk about that, so. If it's okay with the board, I would just like to leave this. Yes, we have sixty-six thousand left, but when you add, um, brining for maybe, maybe another twenty? Jay?
Yeah, yes.
And then, and then twenty-five, we're getting real close. And we may need, uh, some of that money, uh, for the steps. So I, if it's okay with the board, I'd kinda like to leave that for now. Refuge, can we move on?
Yes.
Okay, uh, refuse collection, I don't see an issue.
Can you, I have a question, is that?
Sir.
Does the community trash collection come out of that fund?
No, that comes out of, uh.
So I can't believe we're spending eight grand a year to send trash in this building, or is that parks as well?
Operation Parks.
So why isn't it not in the parks budget?
I bless you.
How much time do you wanna spend busting up bills and putting them in?
Well, but they're, they're ninety-five percent and we're five percent. I mean, this office cannot possibly generate the amount of trash that, that the parks system does.
Okay, so, so with some things, we're putting the expense all in one bucket and leaving it just as the, as a gross expense. In other places, we're taking the bill and we're splitting it up and charging it to departments. I, I think at some point down the road, we're gonna have to have a conversation about the, the philosophy and which way we're gonna do it. But, we, we can't change it all.
Is it all the same vendor? Is it all GFL?
Is it part of the Emmett County?
No, it's got nothing to do with recycling.
No, the little thirty, the, each ticket we give to.
They charge us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's totally separate. Like, I do, I think that's totally separate.
Okay.
Alright, nevermind, move on.
Wait, wait, well, hang on. Do, does anybody, do you remember what we paid for Community Trash Day, which account?
Ninety, twenty-nine hundred, twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred. And I expect it to be double that, just the, you know, the upcoming one, I expect to be way more.
Okay. But that's not till next fiscal year?
Uh, is it August?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, got it.
Okay.
Just stirring up trouble over there.
No, 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 it's, it's a good question, it's a good que, uh, cemetery, I, I do believe, you know, we had a lot of burials, and I think we probably wanna put, how much do we wanna add to contracted services for spring burials, do you think? Cause I think we do need to add.
I think you just play it by ear.
Yep, when they come in, you move the budget.
Okay.
That's an ebb and flow thing, so it's hard to judge.
I'm sorry?
We already have one scheduled for May.
And what's the average cost?
That I don't know.
Like three?
It's on, it's on the web, but I, I think it's like five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Six hundred, something like that.
Alright, so.
You don't make fun of them.
You know.
Well, no, it's just, it was a pass.
You know, following that guidance that we were, if it becomes, if a deviation is apparent, I'll, I'll propose it, we put a few hundred dollars.
When, when it becomes apparent, right? We, we, they're not asking us to be psychic, they're just asking us to be.
Yeah, but she said we already got one schedule.
So going back to refuse?
Yes, sir.
When we get the tickets from, uh, Emmett County, we do, we charge it against that account.
Okay.
And I'm sure we charge GFL against that account.
Okay.
And then there's, uh, depending upon, uh, I think parks probably charges their own sanitation to, they have, they have services within their accounts for that.
Okay.
But, uh, maybe township lines, other than parks, it goes to that account.
That might be under contracted services or something?
No, no, I think parks may have their own account number.
Okay, so air, can we move to airport then? Airport's right where they should be, any objections? Okay, then, uh, we moved to parks. Um, they're thirty-six percent. But, uh, I don't, I don't think there's any reason to do anything with them and, because of the spring surge. And, uh, I guarantee you, the hundred K that they're getting from the county is not gonna cover everything that they need to do. I mean, that's become readily apparent in recent weeks.
Well, the, the hundred K's supposed to be for continuous improvement projects, this is the budget for operational expenses.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, if the, uh, to give you an example, they had set aside, I think, maybe ten thousand dollars for gravel that is definitely needed down there. Well, the bathrooms have to come first, and if they run out of money, they certainly have the option to, uh, take money out of this budget for their gravel. So.
But is that a reimbursement question? I mean, didn't we have to give them paid receipts in order to get that money?
Yes, we do.
So we've already expended it, it's not, you can't, it's tough to look at it as revenue, cause it's already been spent.
Not the whole hundred grand.
Close, I mean.
No, that's not a close, well.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight.
Of the hundred?
They've only spent twenty-eight.
Okay, that's, that's all those invoices for like the bleachers and all that stuff.
Correct. Okay, uh, boat launches, immaterial?
But lucky in eight oh one, I think Janet said that, I think that's where they, where we have, uh, chaskeys and the people that attend to our.
Facilities.
Facilities, if you will, at the parks, or at the green docks.
Right. Now, uh, CIP, one of the things that we have to do is, I'm gonna have to do a, a budget adjustment for the February meeting for every single dollar in that line.
For who?
Every single dollar in.
So the CIP is all.
For the CIPs, needs a corresponding number in the budget, in the first column. So we're gonna have a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cent budget adjustment. Unless Jan comes up with an alternative, in the meantime.
Uh, in order just to get things balanced off?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so, uh, can we, police fund is good, DDAs out of our lane, I wanted to go to sewers. Five ninety?
You're skipping over fire?
Uh, no, go ahead.
So in light of the comment that I heard from Mr. Waldron at the last meeting, that we've been paying them in arrears, I'd, I'd like to go back through, between now and the February meeting, the analysis of the contracted amounts and the payments that we've made. I think we owe them some money at this point, that, um, and, and I'm hoping we can get that meeting set up so that we can talk about how we're gonna get ahead of this thing with a forty-three percent increase on the docket. So, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we change the budget, but we might have to do that in order to.
Okay.
Get things squared away with them.
Did we promise them a check?
We're gonna make a check right away.
They already got it, the next day.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Oh, it just had that booked, yeah, okay. What, what are we paying?
Uh, no, we, we signed a contract with them, we haven't given them a check yet, but I'm aware.
Alright, you're right, cause you haven't collected the funds.
Right.
There you go.
So, well, we did collect some funds in December, but I had, I, I'm very reluctant to write checks on accounts that are, that aren't.
Right, so.
Sure.
Absolutely reconciled through the end of the month, yes.
Okay.
So, now that that's done through the end of December, I can.
So the contract has been approved for the, this one's had, this, this one has already been approved.
Calendar year.
Yeah, for the twenty-fourth calendar year, yeah.
Hey, Jan, why, why's this word up, what's, what's that about?
So it looks like there's a difference between what we budgeted for expenses and what we con, and what we expected to receive in revenue to the detriment of four dollars for the fire contract. I don't, I'm not currently projecting that, that we're gonna get a hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars of revenue, so I, I gotta look at that again, that number again, too.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, police, uh, streetlights. Certainly, we've paid some streetlight bills, right? Yeah, sixteen. Thirty-four thousand in revenue.
So if we need to up that to cover the projected costs, we need to get that on the form to up the millage for street lighting. I don't know what the limit is, um, have to look at that.
Well, the cost of electrics going up, we have to stay with that, unfortunately.
And figure out how much room, wiggle room we have in the millage and get that on the form so the county commissioners can approve it.
But have you received any revenues towards those streetlight special assessments? High in the village?
It's, it's in the December bill, it's in the winter bills, yep.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the only question.
Yep, yep.
So, so once that's known, then we can look at that millage, correct? Okay, great.
What's the deadline for that form? June?
Well, we have to, we have to have the budget done. And the deadline's not, uh, typically, we send it in in July, L four oh twenty-nine. And, it, you know, but, we, if we wanna move the fire, uh, budget forward, then we need to have them give us another budget by, by that time, so we can try to.
Well, I think that budget should be part of the budget discussion for the next fiscal year, so that we're on the same page.
Okay.
And try to move it to fiscal.
And, and we asked for a meeting, they haven't got back to us, right?
They've had.
And they got back to you at all?
Nope.
Jan?
No.
When, when did we wanna have it?
I, I think, I think the sooner we can sit down and talk about it and give them the appropriate, I, I mean, I don't know that we've ever asked them for a, a budget or a project, a projection in the past, so I'd like to give them as much time as possible to be able to pull that together and think about, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a, um, a transition for them to move from thinking in a calendar year to thinking in a, in a.
Fiscal.
In a fiscal year, but I think if we're paying them currently, instead of paying them in arrears, that that, that that's, um, probably a strong incentive for them to, to make that switch.
Okay, so, we need a meeting sooner than later?
I, I think it would be great.
Okay. Alright, I'll call them again. Uh, library, look at that. ARBA. Am I gonna have to add? No, we already have an ARBA balance, so. That should be good.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, tax in, funds, boat launch looks good. Any questions on boat launch? Any issues on boat launch? That's our restricted fund.
This conversation, we are working on, uh, barcode, QR code, to somewhat automate that process.
How about investing some of their money? Gonna do that eventually too, right?
Well.
They got like a hundred and twelve thousand, I think, sitting in there.
So, who gets to decide what they're gonna use that for and when they're gonna spend it? And who's gonna tell me how long I can tie it up? Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna put it in a, an investment and then have them say, why did you do that, we had this planned.
Well, they need to ask us, they need to ask you, right?
They need a board meeting in minutes out of minutes to give us direction.
Yeah, I would love to get some investment income for that money.
Okay. But, what I hear you saying is, the Parks Commission has to ask you by vote, right?
Just give me some direction.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's all I need.
When's their next meeting, the Parks Commission?
Next month.
Yeah, a month from now.
So are you gonna talk to them about?
If they'll answer my phone calls. But I can, I can talk to Greg, he's, he's, he's very successful.
I, I was talking to Greg just before this meeting, and I think there's probably gonna be a, an opportunity for me to talk to them about the structure of the revenue, and this can be part of that conversation.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good deal.
Anything else on boats? Sewer fund, so. Because of our pumps, I'm gonna have to make some substantial, uh, budget adjustments. Let me see here, there's one here.
The repairs and maintenance equipment, nine thirty-one account.
Yeah, I was looking at revenues for.
Yep.
And we have some pumps that, that came out of the CIP.
Yes. Yes. So, yeah, you can see.
Page twenty.
Yeah, repairs, maintenance, and equipment, gonna have to adjust that. Gonna have my hands full, we're at a hundred and seventy-six percent. It's the same way with, uh, where's the CIP here? There it is, nineteen thousand dollars, I've gotta adjust that.
The liability insurance is quite hit.
Where's that at?
Nine thirty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, and, oh, oh, by the way, the state of Michigan, if I heard Tammy Wright, has substantially increased their annual licensing fee.
It's doubled, came in today, three thousand, first of a thousand five hundred.
Yeah, but you.
Wow.
You pay them all this money, and then they say, well, we don't have enough people to do your sewer, sewer permits. You're gonna have to wait another week or two, and another month.
Be about, be about to get trained.
While they're working from home, and you can hear the babies and the dogs in the background. But, I'll, I'll bite my tongue. Okay, road capital, any questions on sewer, it's just a lot of budget adjustments.
Well, yeah, especially with their new contract, it went up, and so we're gonna have to make sure that that is, um, refunded.
But we do have, uh, substantial funds in the R, RNI, right? Looking at the last treasurer report, we got like.
Yep.
Two sixty or something. And just so everyone knows, Jan found the annual CPI, it's three point four percent. So, at the next meeting, we have to, you know, vote on the, our six percent plan that we've had for many years. But for Lake State Park, we can't, until August of twenty twenty-five, is it wrong? We can't raise them more than the CPIU, which this year was three point four percent. I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so, is there anything else? Any comments, anything I missed, anything you wanna say before we move on?
Bob, with that, with them painting under the bridge, our volunteer group might be doing that. What would that reflect, roads and bridges, that expense?
It's not gonna cost us anything, because they're supplying the paint for free.
Okay, so.
It's a special coating.
I mean, the road commission's.
Yeah, the, the road commission's providing.
And then, and then, we're gonna try and get some volunteers to actually do the painting, so that way.
And we've already paid for the insurance.
Right.
Yeah, we got folks lined up, in fact, if it wasn't for the snow, we are gonna have a volunteer meeting this, about that, but, you know, we got until spring, so.
Right, right.
Any other questions before we move on to policy?
How is the software going?
For what?
For work, are we updating?
IT, she's talking about.
Oh, oh, it's going fine, the transition started, the, the head of their department, the head of Avenon's department was out here a week ago today. All of the VC3 equipment has been removed, although we're still double paying this month, we're paying for the transition, so we're paying both vendors. The new remote monitoring server, or server, excuse me, router was installed, it's working. The off-site backup was verified, a new full detailed backup ran over the weekend, it started at five fifteen on Friday and was still running on Monday morning, but it completed. And there's an email that went out that you should've seen already with all the new contact info for how to get service. I would ask that anytime you do have to call them, that you at least CC me, you don't have to call me first, you don't need to talk to me before calling for help. And so far, we're very pleased. I also can tell you that the library is going with them as well, with both our IT vendor, which is Avenon, and our void vendor, which is UpTime. And I'm pretty sure the police department will follow through, so they're already on our phones, they're probably gonna be making the move as well, they're, they're under six months' worth of contract with VC3, I think it's up in May or June. They may let them out early, but I think that just from a normalcy standpoint, it really makes sense for the whole building to be using.
Would you repeat the comment for the board that you made to me about the night and day difference?
Oh, my goodness, yeah, the, so these guys are very proactive. They've already identified cost savings where we had included all, here's a perfect example, we had included all of the election laptops on the monthly service agreement. When their director of the IT department was out here installing the software, and that, we got to that part of the transition, and he goes, how often do you use these? Well, we use them for elections. Well, why are you paying for twelve months on them when you only need them for five? So, right there, we're gonna, we're gonna put those things on the contract for the month of the election, they're gonna do the updates, they're gonna do a backup, and then when the elections are done, we're gonna put them on the shelf, and we don't pay them for them until the next election month, so, just.
Well, that's great.
Just phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal.
Okay.
And I think the library was suitably, was duly impressed as well, and certainly the same with UpTime.
Before we leave the budget, you know, we paid some ARPA money for the fixing the heat and the cooling, and the gentleman came and found some real problems. And we haven't been able to fix it yet, so they had to order some parts, and as soon as the parts get in here, they're gonna come back, and they're gonna fix that, and hopefully, that'll solve this problem.
The other thing we found is that the whole HVAC system is hardwired into our network, which we weren't aware of, so, and it just coincidentally worked out that the HVAC vendor was here at the same time as the IT vendor, and they were able to talk, and I was able to steal some equipment from the IT guy and do some wire tracing and sniffing.
You didn't steal anything, you borrowed it.
I gave it back, yeah. I have my own, I just didn't have it with me, but we identified the, where the cable runs go, where in the mechanical room that HVAC system is hardwired to. Any of us can get it on any of the building computers, so, we're working on that, the vendor that was out, the, the temperature controls guy out of Traverse City, Gordon's had that access to that, the clerk's computer previously had access to it. Gordon's having an IP problem down there with the phones, again, another example. VC3 told them to handle the additional sonic wall firewall that CCE required, because CCE wouldn't allow them to put the volume system on, the same firewall that the lean uses. So, they had to purchase another firewall, VC3 came out and installed it, it screwed up a couple of their computers, we still had, don't have that resolved. The guy from Avenon was here, just like took him down there to give him a tour, he looked, physically looked at the devices and said, oh, this doesn't belong here, it should go here, we know how to fix it. So, again, just, you know, all of us are, are so impressed with these people compared to the current state of VC3, which, again, is a change, because when they were IT, IT were fine, but VC3 bought them and they've dematerialized it, so.
And one other thing before we leave budget on five ninety sewer fund, we're very, very close to being operational on that generator.
Club Road?
Yes.
Right, as soon as, I would say in the next two weeks, I will be trained, Doug and his assistant will be trained, as will Meaden Hunt, and that, that's gonna take a big, a big worry off all our shoulders, because we'll be able to use the other portable generators for the smaller pumps.
So, is there another bill coming after the training?
One more. When, when it's all finished, we owe Tanner another seventy-five hundred dollars, which is a hundred percent reimbursable, so I did not submit the previous seventy-five hundred dollar bill, I'm just gonna put it in fifteen K all at once to EGLE. So. So, if it's okay, can we move on to policy?
Yep.
Okay, so, as you may recall, our attorney, way back when, wanted to take a look at chapter two. We sent it to him, I made some notes, Janet made some notes. I, I got this to you to study. I do. Go ahead, Janet. Janet made us a clean copy.
With all the improvements, or I should say.
But I think you added one thing when people apply?
Yeah, I put on, let me find that. I added this, that.
Paragraph what?
It's at that page.
Okay, back page.
Bottom. Back page of what?
Two C.
Of two.
Chapter two.
If appointed, I will comply with all statutory and other retirement obligations of my appointment, including adherent, this is the part I added, adhering to relevant state, county and township laws, ordinance, regulations and policies. They, if they acknowledge before they apply, they know what we're expecting out of them, that they will go with all laws, ordinances and policies that are appropriate to their committee or whatever, and they acknowledge it straight up when they apply, I, I put it in that, so, we don't have any arguments about that.
Where was that, Jan?
It was.
On the acknowledgement at the bottom of the application.
Application, so the application.
The very last page of chapter two.
Okay.
I just added that on, so they knew what was expected out of them, it's only fair that we tell them before they apply.
Is there any suggested changes or recommended changes, other than what has been made? Oh, did you wanna tell them about correspondence, what he changed there?
Oh, do, do we wanna do these all at once, or do we wanna do them?
Yeah.
I would just like to do chapter two first. If that, if that's okay.
Okay.
Because, smaller parts are easier.
Yeah, let me go.
Yeah, he spent quite a bit of time on this, so I was, I was pretty impressed.
Two sixteen? Two sixteen, what is that?
And again, we're not, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, we'll vote on this if.
Yeah, just read it over, see if there's any changes you guys.
We'll, we'll vote on this in February.
Okay.
But if you have any questions, that would be the time.
The lawyer said, for board correspondence, he said, all you have to do is put in the packet of, of any correspondence that needs immediate board action, and that's all we have to do with that.
So, I know everyone's been busy, so this gives you additional time, if there's something else you wanna come up with, and I will not put it in the consent agenda. So, if there's any concerns, I have one that I found that I'll address later, but it's minor. And then, any questions on chapter two before we leave it? Okay, chapter four. I know that Jan and Jay both wanna make a lot of changes, but remember, this is a living document, and all I did was update the CIP portion, where it said, planning commission to township supervisor, so you can see it on the following.
For that one, too?
Pages four point one two. Four point one six. Four point one eight.
It's really everything from that section that starts at four point one two to the end of four point one eight.
Correct, and that is the only changes I made.
Up to us.
And if, if, if the clerk and the treasurer wanna suggest other changes, like I said, it's a living document, you can do it in February, we can do it at another time, you just fill out the form, send it to me, and I put it on the agenda. Any concerns about chapter four?
Just one, with the CBS.
See, I'm sorry?
Casual leave, vacation, sick time.
That's chapter five.
That's chapter five.
We're, we're not ready for chapter five yet.
Sorry.
It's not on the agenda, but again, anytime you wanna put it on the agenda. The next one is, gonna take just a little bit of time, which is the proposed chapter nine.
This is the airport.
Right, so, we have been working on this for months. We took documents from all over the country of like-sized airports, and I'm not a pilot, but our current airport manager, volunteer Mark Markowitz, is a very successful businessman, very experienced, and we actually sat down with the experts, did we not?
Seven times.
Twice. And we got this cut from like ten pages to five, six, not a lot. Just the bare bone stuff, now, this will need to be legally reviewed, unlike chapters two and four that have already been legally reviewed, but I just wanted to see if you had any questions about it. I am concerned about paragraph. Where is it? Nine dot eight. It's right here at the very bottom, nine point eight tie down. So. The hangar owners don't wanna, of course, don't wanna, don't wanna charge fees. And their recommendation is tie-down space for aircraft on the airport property is free for up to a continuous fourteen-day period stay, after fourteen days of continuous aircraft tie-down fee, a monthly fee established by the board will be billed starting with the fifteenth day, and on and on and on, so.
So, why should it be free?
Thank you, so.
I mean, we put boats in the water, costs you six dollars.
Yep.
And then, that's probably gonna go up.
I mean, my, my own person.
To use the park to cost you money to reserve a pavilion.
Yep.
Use this room to cost you money to, to reserve it under certain circumstances, so what makes them special?
Well, my recommendation is if you look at paragraph nine dash nine, there are three paragraphs above that. And that should all be stricken, if, if, if this board so chooses, and it should say, you know, tie-down space for aircraft on airport property, fees will be set by the Board of Trustees, that's it.
So, you, did you say, did I hear you right, that you checked with other airports, to see what they're doing?
Sheboygan charges fifteen dollar tie-down fee.
Per day?
Per day, for a single engine.
And for twin is?
A twin, it's thirty, and for turbo, it's fifty.
Yeah.
Why doesn't, I didn't understand why they do not want us to charge.
This is what the airport hangar owners are concerned with, and they wanna make it as accessible as possible to people coming in and having a vacation, because they feel that it encourages tourism and money flowing through the community, and, and that kind of thing, and that's what they're concerned about.
Do they, do they have any data?
No.
No, but, but we're only talking two or three planes a summer, a lot of times.
Well, you'd be surprised.
So.
Who monitors that?
We'd have to, if we're gonna set a fee, we'd have to.
If we set a fee, we'll have a record.
Yeah, the data.
We'll have another QR code at the airport, they can pay with it.
Well, initially, all I would do, and if, if the board allows me, is I put, you know, a little mailbox there at the terminal with a set of instructions and a pre-printed envelope, just like you do at the boat launch, but I could use regular envelopes, and then they just fill out the tail number and their contact information, put their money in and put it in there.
But we may have to have a QR, because a lot of people only carry credit cards, they don't carry.
So, and what I, what, to add a little to what Jay's saying, is you have people who own property, who let people put their tent up in, on their property, it's called hip camp, right? So, you got ten acres, you put a little fire pit out there, you let people stay, they don't stay for free, it's twenty bucks a night for, for rusted camping, Burt Lake does not let people stay for free, there isn't a campground around here that lets people stay for free, you might wanna let somebody stay in your driveway for free for a few days, but I bet you're not letting them stay for indefinite periods of time, and ticking off your neighbors. I, I, you know, I, I understand that, that they have communicated that allowing people to fly in and stay here brings economic benefit to the community, but, but so do all of these other things, right?
Agree, yeah.
So, there, there is no free lunch, it can't be free. Pick, pick a number that's not zero.
Okay, so.
Please.
I, I will make a suggested change to these three paragraphs, along with a, a recommended discussion on fees for the February meeting, if, if it's okay with the board.
And like parks, I would like them to propose what the. And like parks, I would like them to propose what the fee structure is on an annual basis and that the board approves it. But they, they need to propose it. They need to own the fee structure.
And, and on, on top of that statement, I'd like to have that before spring, so we can get that posted and taken care of-
And put it in budget.
Boat lunch fees and things like that, and whether they're going to rent the, those, uh, boat docks and all that. We need to know that in advance, so we can get that structured throughout our budget and also signage and all kinds of things, so, yeah.
And, and I'm fine with a flat fee. I'm fine with 15 bucks regardless. We're not qualified to decide whether it's a turbo or not.
Yeah, keep it simple.
Twin's obvious, but 15 bucks-
Bye Sally. Have a good night.
Keep it a flat fee. That, I'm good.
Did you contact Harbor Springs Airport?
Yeah, that's a much larger airport, and, but-
Where?
Harbor Springs. We did-
Oh, yeah, that's a large, it's not, uh, comparable.
No, it's not.
Yeah, stupid. The only comparable we have is Sheboygan and Mackinac City.
What was Mackinac?
I mean, uh, Mackinac Island.
Mackinac Islands.
Uh, Sheboygan charges 15. I think, uh, Mackinac charges 12, but I think that was a few years ago. But, for some reason, both of those airports have a, a three-tier structure, and I don't think it's necessary for us, as he's pointed out. I mean, if you want to charge $10, $15, what, you know, whatever it is, you know, a plane is a plane is a plane.
And they may have an airport manager that's full-time. We'd have to, like, kind of keep track of that ourselves, so I think we need to keep it simple. And, and as always, any, any revenue collected at the airport stays for airport expenses. That's in the contract with the state.
Well, it's not gonna be substantial, is it?
No, it won't be substantial, just, just FYI.
Probably pay for the fuel for the lawnmower.
It's a good faith thing.
Yeah, it's a good start. Uh, any, anything else on policy before we move on? Making good time here, getting, trying to get out of here. Uh, real estate, um, our workshop is over. Go back to regular rules. Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, that this board authorize the clerk and the supervisor to, uh, uh, sign the closing documents for Commerce Park lots 15 and 16. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Can I interject?
Yes, sir.
So just, you'd ask me, uh, for, for some proposed revenue figures off of those?
Uh-huh.
And I have that. The only figure that I don't have is the owner's title insurance policy, which is the seller's cost. I have it for parcel 15. It's 395 bucks. I don't have it for parcel 16. The purchase price for 16 is 35,000, as opposed to 23,000, so it's going to be proportionately greater. I'm guessing six, $700. But if you want the details, and these purchase agreements are inverse, in that, the one for parcel 16, it's a $35,000 purchase price, but they're asking, and we've, the board's already agreed to accept both these offers. The one for parcel 16 asks that the board absorb and pay off the SAD for the sewer, which takes the 35,000 revenue down to approximately 29,000. Seven percent real estate commission of 2450-
That's yours.
Makes the realization fit to the township in cash approximately 26,550. On parcel 15, it's a $23,000 purchase price.
That's for chat.
They do have the hard number on the title policy. Seven percent real estate commission is 1610. The total revenue on that parcel to the township should be 20,995, to give you a combined total for the two of 47,535, give or take.
Nice.
The only seller's fees on this, there should be no closing costs. Those are all buyer's costs. We have an owner's policy on both and real estate commission. The other thing that's changed, and it's for the better, so it doesn't really require any review. The only thing that's changed on the purchase agreement is the one for parcel 15. Um, they were going to get a mortgage for that, and Mr. Ellis advises us now that they've decided to just pay cash, so there's no appraisal, mortgage, any of that stuff. Both of these should be ready to close quickly, first Sheboygan title, and as soon as they're ready to go, either one of these gentlemen should go there.
So can you provide us with that information, so we cross-reference the documents that we're gonna close on?
Sure. They, they should send you a closing package prior to your signature. If you would just forward that back to review. But those figures are pretty close.
Okay. Um, before we get to regular bills, we have two special bills. Um, one is the attorney bill for $460 that has to be charged. And thank you for catching that, Jay, or whoever caught it. Was that you, Chris?
Looks like.
Um, that is for the phase one, and we have to keep that separate, so we get reimbursed by USDA. Um, so we will need a motion, uh, to approve that as part of the 590 CIP. Is that correct, Jay?
Yes, this is gonna come out of the enterprise fund, so-
Right.
I'll make the motion to pay the bill and to move money from the, uh, or with general fund, and obviously account for it in the enterprise fund, something of that effect.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the-
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
How long does it take to get the reimbursement back?
Uh, we may never get it back. We have to close on the sewer, we have to close on the sewer loan. Um, but the answer is, if we proceed, we, we'll get all this back. That's, that's why we have to account for it separate. Thank you, Chris, for catching that. Uh, the next one is, even though it's within my cause center, I feel a lot better if we have board approval to provide, uh, $25,000 check to the road commission. Uh, and the reason for that is, uh, they're getting ready to go out for bid. Isn't that what they said?
Yeah, bid for gravel.
And they, they need to know how much, uh, they're dealing with countywide. Uh, is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve that. $25,000 for gravel.
Repairs.
Yep, it's for spot repaired gravel.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
Which budget line are you getting this from?
Uh, roads and bridges, cause center.
Okay.
And yes, it'll put that one line item slightly over.
Okay.
But it'll still be way under on the cause center.
Okay, now I follow. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Okay, regular bills. Motion to pay the bills. I'll, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
By the way, I voted aye on gravel, right, and it's aye.
Yep, yep. Sir, uh, I moved to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Okay, so discussion. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to pay bills.
Yeah, we already did that. We're just-
Oh, I'm still behind. Okay, that's why they get the-
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we had a motion in a second.
Okay.
Uh, we're just kind of looking through here to see if anybody's got any questions.
No questions.
Standard insurance.
That's, uh, benefits for police.
Oh, okay. Good. We paid ourselves to score a township.
Charged ourselves for sewer.
Oh, thank you. I wonder how we did that. Oh, I want to bring to the board's attention on page three. Um, USIC locating services about, uh, three quarters of the way down, eight, six, six, nine. Uh, we are paying some bills, but I just wanted to let you know that we still have bills in dispute. So, and until they come up with an answer, there's some bills from back when, and Tammy's been helping us with that. I just wanted to let you know we're on top of it.
That's Ms. Dick, right?
That's Ms. Dick.
Yep, they send the bills for other sections.
Any other questions on bills?
The Tanner electric. What, what is that coming out again? Is that the, is that CIP or?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's CIP enterprise fund.
Okay.
And then, uh, when they, we get the next $7,500 bill and we pay that, then I'll go into EGLE for 100% reimbursement on $15,000.
That's what I thought.
We've already processed that.
Right.
And, and some of these bills are lighter than those, but-
Yeah, I, I see that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Any public comment?
I think you guys are doing a great job. You got a great team, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment is closed. Board comment? Board comment is closed. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. I second that.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.